...be on time, so I'm overwhelmed with the turnout, so thank you everyone for coming. I have some notes here because my memory isn't as good as it used to be. So, a couple of housekeeping things first. Don't tell the fire department or Trish that we might have too many people in here. In the event that something happens, there's an exit there and there's an exit out through the back, so. And there's a handicap washroom back there, and then there's two washrooms around there, so if you need those facilities, that's where they are. I want to thank Vancouver Coastal Health and the PrEP Society and the city of Powell River for helping to put this on. I think it's an important topic that we're not talking about. People are dying, and 900 and something died last year in British Columbia. Sorry?
950.
950. If it was a flu epidemic, we'd be all up in arms, and we're not. And I think it's time that we do something about it. And I'm not exactly sure what that will look like, but you're here and it's a start. Already 300 and something, Dr. Martikay will know the number, in the first three months, we're looking at like 1,200 deaths in BC this year. And we have to do something. So, I'm glad you all came. We're just gonna do a few presentations, and then we're gonna have a quick little break. There'll be some refreshments, and then we're gonna do a question and answer period. So, I think we'll get started. Our first presenter is Dr. Paul Martikay, who is our Medical Health Officer for Vancouver Coastal Health Authority, and that covers Powell River and the Sunshine Coast. He was educated at McGill and University of Toronto and moved to British Columbia in 1993 to become the Medical Health Officer for the previous Coast Care of Alde Health. He's responsible for monitoring the overall status for the area and recommend health status and recommend actions that need to improve health and prevent illness. He provides leadership, support, and advice about community medicine. Please welcome Dr. Martikay.
1993, that means 25 years here in Powell River. I'm proud of it. It's a great community, and I'm so glad you came out. Obviously, there's an interest, you're not putting your head in the sand, and the fact is, is that we have a crisis. Like Maggie said, the numbers are horrific. We're not basically making huge inroads, and that's why it's important that you who are here get the word out, because it seems to me that we're not doing enough to get the word out ourselves. And the word, the take-home message for all of you is that if you know anyone who uses a partner, a loved one, the message is, do not use alone, okay? And the second message is, decrease your dose, because you do not know what's in the dose that you're taking. Simply put, the drugs here in Powell River, I've got a little black mark here. I was gonna bring a PowerPoint, you showed up, you would've had it close to blinds, you wouldn't have seen it. Here's my PowerPoint right here. Okay, so let's give you in brief 10 minutes, a little bit of perspective on why we're here and where we're at right now. This is not new that we have drug overdose deaths in this province, okay? We've had, oh, since I started here, probably about 200 deaths a year. And that is simply put, because the heroin that was available was killing people, okay? What happened and why we're here today is because that situation changed last year, all right? To the point where the provincial health officer put out basically a public health emergency, meaning that the numbers spiked. From those 200 deaths, we saw, as Maggie said, 950 deaths last year. We're on the road this year to surpassing that. Even with this emergency and the measures that have been put into place, we have not been able to reduce the numbers, and this is a huge concern.
Were they all overdosed with fentanyl, or was it also?
Good question. So, we cannot call this a fentanyl crisis, okay? This is an opioid crisis. So, all those deaths were opioid deaths, okay? But not all fentanyl. Because, and we've got some police officers here, there was a seizure of what's on the street called oxycodone. They make their own little tablets, and when the police checked, and that's here in Powell River, it contained a whole mix mash of different analogs of opioids, not just fentanyl, okay? So, we know the drugs are contaminated, we know they're here in Powell River. We've had six deaths, okay, in the last year, and two of those deaths have been publicized by the media. One of those deaths resulted in a coroner's inquest, and that inquest came up with 21 pretty good recommendations that were carried through, and you're gonna hear more about it in the presentations to follow. So, basically put, the six deaths that occurred were a result of opioids, not all of them fentanyl. So, some of them were carfentanil, okay?
Well, we use carfentanil.
All right, so you guys know, I mean, we're talking about a speck. This little speck on the table here will kill you, right, if you inject it?
Then you just drink blood for elephants or something like that?
Carfentanil is big, it's for big animals, okay? And the concern is, is that I saw a wave go up the coast, so you're not alone here, all right? The Sunshine Coast, the Lower Sunshine Coast, also had that spike in deaths that happened around Christmas, New Year's last year, and moved up the coast. So, obviously, I would think that the traffic or the route of the dealers is going from the Sunshine Coast up, because we got the same product on the Sunshine Coast. But let's put this into perspective, okay? We are basically not immune as a community, but it's really the downtown east side that is taking the brunt of this, okay? What we're seeing, and I'm gonna give you just some general stats in terms of who's dying, is majority men, all right? 80%. 80% of the victims are men. We are seeing men in the age group of 30 to 50, so this is not a young man's disease, okay? This is, you know, this is established users who are succumbing to this disease. We're also seeing that the deaths, contrary to popular belief, are not happening in the back alley. They're happening indoors, in washrooms, alone, okay? Alone. That is the problem, because when you're alone, here's what happens with the carfentanil, is you're basically, you're out. Like, you don't even have time to call 911, and what happens then is your respiratory system basically starts to, well, arrest, okay? That's where the antidote comes in, and the antidote that we're talking about is called naloxone, all right? And naloxone basically acts as a, it blocks the receptor that the carfentanil is attacking, all right? And so what that means is that because it's blocked, you start breathing again, you go to the Emerge, and for you to know that we have naloxone placed throughout the community here, and I think we were going to have a pamphlet prepared about where the centers that administer naloxone are, but I'm gonna tell you, and they're also on our website. There's a naloxone kit, here, just, I'll put it, show it up. This is a naloxone kit, this saves lives, okay? The police have them, fire ambulance, you're gonna hear from ambulance in a few minutes about what they're seeing. But essentially put, the naloxone is being placed in the emergency room here in Powell River, the Texada Medical Clinic, the Powell River Community Health, the Powell River Needle Exchange, I'm gonna speak a little more about the stats from the needle exchange, the Sunshine Coast Treatment Services, Mental Health and Addictions, Nora's gonna speak to that, Community Resource Center here, twice a week, I believe, naloxone is available. We are charged to anyone in this room who has a friend or has a concern about anyone who might be using, okay? And so, and Career Link is also a, has naloxone available. Remember, 911 is going to bring naloxone to the victim for resuscitation, okay? But that victim, if they're alone, is not gonna be resuscitated, and that's part of the problem, okay? And part of the problem, and why are they doing it alone? Because of the stigma attached to it, right? People think it's a lack of willpower. Well, it's not. It's a disease. These people, anyway, I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm getting a little excited about this. All right, let me backtrack and just tell you a little bit more about some stats here. We are continuing to see overdoses, and the ambulance service is going to tell you exactly what they're seeing here in Powell River. The Emerge here, our emergency department saw five from the beginning of the year until now. Excuse me. Three of those were opioid-related, two of them were otherwise. Emergency services has seen 12, not all of those 12 have been opioid-related, but just to give you an idea, the crisis is not going away, and we're basically trying to get a better understanding of who these victims are, so that we can, so that we can target our resources and our activities to help these people and prevent further deaths. So, the needle exchange. You should know that we've had a longstanding, successful needle exchange in this town for the last 20 years. We've got about 350 registered users. Oh, thank you, that's very kind. Does the camera and delivers well, I like that. So, let's not get, let me put this into perspective. This is 350 users that are being registered in the needle, remember, the needle exchange program was initially designed to provide clean needles, and what that meant is, we did not want basically to share blood, right? And share HIV, hepatitis C, hepatitis B. But now the needle exchange is also fortunately there to basically advise users on what's going on in this town. And one of the good things is that we are now gonna start a little pilot, a little project, where the users in this town are going to be able to have their urine dipstick to work fentanyl. Now, it's not, I know it doesn't sound that exciting. I would prefer to say they'll be able to bring their drugs in, and we'll be able to test them and tell them if you've got fentanyl in it. Quite frankly, and hit the camera off, you can use the dipstick off-label to see if the drug that you think is heroin has fentanyl in it, but really it's designed to be used to test urine. And I think the key is, is that the users understand that they've been exposed, that what their dealer has been saying to them is not correct, and so that will hopefully make them more cautious with future doses, okay? I'm not going to go too much more into detail here, other than to tell you that the needle exchange saw 26 new users this year. We see about 12 per week. We've handed out about 30 kits of the naloxone to users and the friends of users in the town, and I think we're making a little bit of headway in terms of getting the antidote out there. But remember, it's not the magic pill here, okay? It is basically to deal with someone who's in respiratory arrest. It doesn't get to the root of the cause, which has to do with the fact that these people who are OD-ing are damaged people. They have been subjected to trauma throughout their lives, usually in childhood. And as a result, our, we've gotta go upstream in terms of our thinking and think about childhood development, early childhood development, so that we don't have kids that are damaged. And it won't surprise you to know that our First Nations people are also overrepresented in this epidemic, okay? So, the importance of basically providing children, kids, with the abilities, the skills, and abilities to make the right decisions later in life is key, from my perspective, in dealing with this. And later, we can get into questions about the need for clean drugs. I mean, that's absolutely a no-brainer. And we are making some progress with the federal government in that respect, but still, from my perspective, it's too slow, and that's bureaucracy unfortunately, and that is not acceptable. Anyway, I will end my comments here. I'll be around for questions, question right here.
Are you saying that fentanyl is accumulative?
Fentanyl is not cumulative. It does, you do basically excrete it from your system, but, for example, the new designer, and remember, these are synthetic opioids. They're made in labs, all right? And the labs can be anywhere in the world. Where they are right now is in China, and you can get this stuff basically online. And the problem with fentanyl and the analogs, the synthetics, is that they're more resistant, you just need more naloxone to counteract the effects. So, that's not cumulative. They're just basically attaching to the receptor much more strongly, and as a result, you need more naloxone to reverse the effects. You can still save the person, but you just need more naloxone, and that's why, and EMS will tell you this, that you can't leave that patient after they've come around just to go on their merry way, because the effect of the naloxone wears off and they're back into respiratory arrest. They've gotta go to the emergency room and be monitored, okay? Some of these people also have receptors, and I'm getting a little bit technical here, that are very sensitive to opioids, which means, and one of the addiction specialists tells me, they're hungry receptors. What that means is, these are receptors that not all normal people have. These are receptors that are hungry for the drug. They want more of it, and therefore, drug-seeking behavior that comes after, say, a sports injury where you were put on an opioid for pain relief, then when the prescription runs out, some people, not all people, continue to pursue that drug because of the fact that their receptor craves it. Anyway, that's too technical.
Do you have a question, Maggie?
Thank you.
You said that it wasn't cumulative. But what's the half-life? How long does it last?
Depends on the analog, yes. Yeah. Now, naloxone basically fills the receptors up, but like you said, it has a half-life, which is sometimes within half an hour, and so that's why you've gotta give another dose to get, yeah? Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Dr. Anna Maria McGuire, who used to be my family doctor. She is now the Head of the Sunshine Coast Treatment Services, which is an opiate substitution therapy program that serves the Powell River area. Welcome, Dr. McGuire.
This is a medical treatment. Before you have a sit, I'm gonna be like this. I'm gonna be all embarrassed, so.
Can I get your?
My just need to get my little setup here. Hopefully this one's gonna last, sorry.
Do you want your own water, or the doctors share?
I don't. I would need to be.
I have a thing for this, if you don't have it.
I am so thrilled to see more than 10 people here. Like, I was really not sure how this would go over, so I'm so happy to see everybody here. First of all, it's my pleasure, I'm going to be talking today about treatment. That's my pull here. It's very much a pleasure just to be speaking to everybody. And some of you will know me probably as Josie's mom and Sean's mom. And I have to say Josie first, because she'd be very mad at me if I didn't say Josie first. But, it's true. In any case, in addition to being the mom of two equally awesome kids, I'm a practicing physician here in Albert. I've been here for about 17 years, since 2000. As a young grad, I went to the lab, and I worked there in the psychiatric hospital and in the pediatric hospital, in addition to being a general practitioner. So, I got quite an affinity for mental health, and I've always enjoyed mental health. When I moved to Surrey in the early 90s, I moved into a clinic, a walking clinic, and there were these heroin addicts that were coming into my office, and they were looking for detox. And I had no idea what to do with these people, and I'd never seen anything like this in Newfoundland, Alberta. And my colleagues seemed to be quite comfortable with this, and she just suggested, why don't you go work in a methadone? And you'll learn about it. I said, okay. So, I did, and I went and worked in Lower Mainland Drug Freedom in New Westminster. And I became very interested in the path of these people, and ever since that time, I've had a real affinity for this work, and I've enjoyed it very much. So, since I came up here, we've been able to partner with the PrEP Society, the Powell River Recovery Program, and they took on the administration of the Sunshine Coast Treatment Services. That was quite some time ago. So, I just wanna talk a little bit about what I do, because as doctors, we tend to look at disease, treatment, and recovery. And recovery, as we see it, is just, it's getting better. Treatment is what we do to help our patients get better from their disease. It's always nice to know that if I can give someone antibiotic for their sore throat or treat their bladder infection, they're going to feel better. But when we talk about treatment in addiction and recovery from addiction, it's a much more complicated thing. So, based on over 9,300 surveys put out there, what is recovery in addiction? Well, it's a lot. They basically grouped it into five different categories. Just sort of goes on, I figured four was enough, because I didn't know it's a lot of, it's a lot of stuff. Things like being honest with myself, being able to enjoy life without drinking or drugging, handling negative feelings, being able to have relationships where I'm not using other people or being used, getting along with family and friends better than I did before, being abstinent. That's a bit of a no-brainer, but no abuse of prescription medications, no use of non-prescribed drugs. Enrich recovery, taking responsibility for the things that I can change, taking care of my physical health, getting the kind of support from others that I need, being the kind of person that I can be. Well, that's big order. And not many of us, as physicians, are quite ready to take that. But we do know a few things. We know what happens to the brain and the body when you start to use heroin. I'm gonna show you a little cartoon about a little baby bird. See if it'll bolt, okay? Hmm, that's an interesting thing. Oh my goodness, there it is again. What is this? Why don't I just check this out? Let me try it. We know that the first experience is often profoundly euphoric. This is the intense stimulation of the opiate receptors in our brain, which are naturally painkillers, and a dopamine response in our addiction center of our brain. Wow, that was something. And try that again. Doesn't take quite so long to pick a meal. But really, we know that if the brain's gonna function at all, it can't do this. It can't be in this state. It just doesn't work. So, the heroin's metabolized, and the euphoria passes, but, oh, it's remembered. I like that stuff. And there's an opportunity to repeat the experience of heart watch. But over time, changes occur in the brain. They resulted in adapted, moderated, and much reduced response. The high is not so high, and the fall is a lot more. And this is what we call tolerance. Tolerance occurs when the endorphins become much less active. You really want it, but it's just not there. And so, with repeated use, the brain gets to the point where there's almost no endorphin response, and it's dependent on outside substances, which is now daily heroin use. And he's using just barely to feel normal. But everything is blank when he doesn't have the drug. Without the drug, the brain and the body feel distressing withdrawal symptoms, including pain, fear, and anxiety. And the drug is used just to avoid withdrawal symptoms. Without the nugget, a little baby can barely stand up and walk, and he wonders why he started doing this. And he really wishes he could still. Once a person becomes addicted to and dependent on the opiates, he or she will often do things to avoid the pain of withdrawal that were unim fashionable to them before. And certainly, most heroin addicts do not want to be addicted. But once it's happened to the brain, it never goes back to the way that it was, and most of people can't see it coming, they've never imagined that they would get hooked. Fortunately, we're understanding more and more how this terrible state got to be there in the first place, and most of it started around the age of 13, not with heroin. It started with another substance, likely nicotine, often THC and often alcohol. It started when the teenage brain found something that made it feel good. All drugs that are addictive have a particular effect on this part of the brain called ventral tegmental area, which stimulates the nucleus accumbens, and in the nucleus accumbens, there is this dopamine surge, quite a powerful experience, and it gives the brain a sense that... What I did was good, it was a good thing, it's the reward central. All addictive drugs stimulate the ventral tegmental area and the nucleus accumbens. That is a part of what defines a drug to be addictive. It can only be addictive if it works in this part of the brain. So, there's many drugs out there, but they don't have that effect. So there's many drugs out there, but they don't have that effect. And all addictive drugs also have another effect. They do something to make you feel good in some other way. Sorry, I've already done that one. Alcohol's a desensitivity effect. Some people really like that. Nicotine has an excitatory and a relaxing effect. And that's an experience that they appreciate. People feel mellowed out on nicotine. The stimulating effect of caffeine and amphetamine and cocaine is highly desirable for some people, and others slightly lack that. The teenage brain is amazing. There are two times in our lives when the brain is capable of massive growth and expansion. The first is in the first two years of life. We can all relate to that most likely. Look at our little babes and our little toddlers. And we're just blown away by how much they're learning. And they are, their brains are doing this. They're figuring out how to move. They're figuring out how to use language. They're figuring out how to be social with us so that their worlds work for them. They're manipulating their environment so that they can be powerful within that environment. But that environment is the family, is that little world. And we're in our adolescence. Very similar changes are happening to the brain. The brain is growing. And it's figuring out now how to do those things, but in a way. How to become a part, getting in this little person, this young being, to become an adult. What's gonna make that person successful in an adulting? Now, the emotional part of the brain is pretty well-developed by adolescents. It's that reasoning part that needs to work. They don't have it when their teenager's, they just don't. But they're working on it. They're working on it from about the ages of fourteen to twenty-five. And during that time, that is when the prefrontal cortex and all that lovely gray matter is developing. We're learning about our, the ways that we can start to be logical, how we can start to process, how we can understand consequences a lot more effectively, or problem-solving at this point in time. Unfortunately, this guy is also pretty, pretty yenny at that time, too. This is a growing part of the brain as well. Now, the brain needs to know that when I do something right, it's a good thing, I'm gonna be rewarded for doing it. And so that can work in a lot of different ways. If somebody's particularly like addicted mechanics or something of that nature, and you happen to notice it, and you're praising him, he's doing a fabulous job, that's a reward, there's a gratification. Let me do that, maybe here again. If you are a musician, however, we've got a fabulous way of developing our musicians. It's a wonderful way, that's really good. I'm a smart person, I can do that, I'll do that again, and I'll do that again. So those behaviors become reinforced. If those are positive, we start to learn a lot of other things. We start to learn how to be, again, be more cognizant, things that are also very basic for survival. If I'm hungry and I get food, I'm gonna get a little dopamine surge in there. It's gonna make me feel, right, I did this. If I need social interaction, I'm gonna try and gain that social interaction. And I may have a dopamine surge, winning again. All of those things caused that dopamine surge. So we have this set up. It's neurologically absolutely necessary. The teenage brain is vulnerable to stimulation of the nucleus accumbens because effective growth in this part of the brain will ensure survival. Adolescents are inquisitive. They want to, they need to explore their environment. They're expanding the universe. And the risks are often taken unfortunately without really understanding consequences because this part of the brain just hasn't quite gotten there yet. They may be perceiving a need to meet more and to get more with their peers and push away with their parents. We all, any one who's had kids knows that, they do this. And we're trying to hold them back and protect them. But they're resistant. And not infinitely in a world where there are addictive drugs currently available. And really, honestly, I'll take this back to the days of maybe teenage babies. Addictive drugs will be tried. Now, it's important to remember that most people who do use addictive drugs, including adolescents, are not going to get addicted to drugs. Not everybody that uses is going to go on and get problems. So why do some? It's actually about the first experiences to a large extent. Under what circumstances did the substance use start? How did that substance make the person feel? Did that experience meet the needs of that toddler? Did it connect him or her with a group of peers with whom they wanted to be connected? Did it bring about a desired connection with another individual? Did it relieve a negative emotion? Did it allow a shy person to become comfortable in an important social situation? And then it's about the repetition. Just like any habit, it's about the repetition. So the majority of people with severe addictions started to use addictive substances at the age of thirteen. The majority of people with a severe addiction in adulthood met that diagnostic criteria at the age of eighteen. And as Dr. Marty Kaye said, we're all saying this is a pediatric disease. This is a disease of childhood. So the more intrinsically rewarding the experience is, and the more available it is, the more likely it is that it is to be used. I guess it's kind of common sense, isn't it? So these drugs that typically are used are nicotine. And I gotta put this up here because kids are faking to date. That's the sexy thing, that they're doing. That's how they're getting their nicotine. We're seeing a lot of it. There are cigarettes, still gum, cannabis, and we're gonna be seeing more of that, and alcohol. And over time, with repeated use of the substances, the brain changes in a way that it needs to have that nucleus accumbens stimulated. And this is really problematic. So this is where the disease of addiction comes on. That's like a desensitized derian is always seeking its reward in subsequentness. So people become very vulnerable to the addictive effects of other substances, not just the initial drug of choice and other activities. Sometimes, down the road, the brain finds opiates. And if that experience is repeated and is profoundly rewarding, it often will be repeated. So it starts off good, but it doesn't last very long. And before long, there's physical dependency and the brain's... So that's the disease. Treatment is what we try to do when we want to get to recovery. And after all the good is gone, heroin can be very terrifying, very terrifying. So by the time that a person comes in to see me for help, they've long since lost control of that drug use. They're dependent, they're sick, and they're fearful without that drug. And there's no more money to buy drugs from the deal, dot, dot, dot. You know where this can lead, right? So as a physician, I'm able to offer certain options, which can be very helpful. And what I like to consider that I do is recovery-oriented, medication-assisted addiction treatment. This approach recommends a combination of medications for opiate dependency, physician and a nurse counseling in matters that are pertaining to aspects of physical and mental health, including diet, exercise, and sleep, one-to-one and relationship counseling, a public health nurse who comes in weekly to the clinic. Vaccinations are kept up to date, and we distribute it, we distribute the vast majority of Narcan, take home Narcan to the community. There's a longstanding relationship with PrEP. And our counselor also works at PrEP Society and provides employment counseling services.
So are you guys funded through PrEP then?
There's no funding. Yeah, there's no funding through PrEP. It's privately funded by... And so through that linkage, we've been connected with other social services, which are, we include the bond program, the community resource center, and CareerLink is a big one, of course, and Family Place. And we have a nurse and physician on site who've got a lot of experience with doing this stuff. They can answer questions, and we do all the time. So within the medical community, we also partner with mental health addictions and public health and the family doctors. So doctors can and often do prescribe medications to help our patients. And it's good to know that with specific treatment of opiate addiction, we have one very effective medication. I'm gonna say something controversial, but that is methadone. Unfortunately, despite its efficacy, methadone is a controversial drug. And perhaps any drug that's historically been linked to the treatment of heroin addiction would be controversial. So I thought that I would just go back and tell you a little bit about the history of the program. The methadone treatment program goes back to nineteen fifty's and the early sixty's with two physicians in New York who were great inventors. It was Dr. Murray Naiswander and Dr. Vincent Doyle. They were both internist and specialists, actually. But they were very distressed at looking at this using population mysteries of New York, this ID heroin using population, which was really a very tragic experience to them. And Dr. Naiswander had the idea, what if we just gave them the harm reduction capacity, their drug, but not heroin? Not heroin, let's not give them something that's very addictive. So knowing the properties of methadone, it has some very unique properties. Once a day, it's orally taken, it's not injected, it is swallowed. It lasts a full day, takes away the withdrawal symptoms. And actually, it has relatively little addictive potential. And that may be surprising to people. But addictive potential is that euphorogenic effect. Methadone has very little of that. It actually has a blocking effect on the euphoria. So they tried this, and they set up a little street clinic to see what would happen. And sure enough, the people came. And they came back, and they came back, and they came back every day. And then these doctors got to really know these people. And they realized that these aren't just, you know, street addicts. These are really kind of interesting people, very interesting stories. And this was the early pioneering of the methadone program. So I have a few, bear with me, this is a bit of a passion moment. I have a few quotes from these physicians in the early days. "It's important to distinguish the causes from the consequences of addiction. The rapid disappearance of theft and antisocial behavior in patients on the methadone program strongly supports the hypothesis that the crimes that they had previously committed as addicts were a consequence of drug hunger, not an expression of our basic psychological origin. It must not be too quickly assumed that these are weak individuals who would fail in society if relieved of compulsion to obtain drugs. But the potential strengths of addicts, like their faults, cannot be judged while the addicts are trapped in their own devices." "The medication given in fixed dose to tolerant subjects does not make patients high or cause any other narcotic effects when the person is tolerant. On the contrary, it eliminates the abnormal euphoric responses to addicts, of addicts to narcotic drugs." These are in the sixty's, these are quotes from these doctors doing their studies. "What was not anticipated at the onset was the nearly universal reaction against substituting one drug per another, even when a second drug enabled the addict to function more. The analogous long-term use of medications such as insulin and digitalis in medical practice had not been considered." So they were surprised. They found something that worked, but there still was a controversy around it. So a therapeutic approach to methadone, this drug, and this is what I do when I'm looking for the right dose for my patient. I see them and I start them, I start them relatively low. We do that for safety reasons. Increase the dose over the course of time to equally once a week. And our target, my target is my patient, always with my patient, and I require very much your feedback, is when are the withdrawal symptoms stopped? At what point have we been able to reduce or perhaps even stop altogether the craving? Methadone has another effect, it's not just an opiate, but it works on another part of the brain. It's a dissociative, dissociative substance. These MDMA receptors are gonna get all technical. That part helps the brain to forget how much it used to like the drug, which is really very relieving for them. It blocks also the euphorogenic effects of opiate choice. So if the methadone is in the system, it's occupying the opiate receptors, heroin, alcohol, the body will not kick it off. I'll just get to a little bit down the road. Because fentanyl kicks it off. Fentanyl kicks it off. And this is why this drug is so horrible on a treatment provider perspective and on a patient's perspective. It undoes what I do, pardon me.
It undoes methadone.
It displaces the... And the survivors, the ones who'll get... So the people with addiction, with a dependency can still get high on it.
What are on Spoxon?
I'll talk about that too. It's horrible. It's got a really high affinity for the opiate receptors and a persistent euphorogenic effect.
So if you stop the craving, suppose, that there's, why are they doing fentanyl? The craving is gone.
Because when you get high on it again, you want it again. It undoes both of these things. So I can have nice, stable people on opiate replacement therapy for years, and the fentanyl's coming in? And they're, they're just like, it's like what they were looking for from the beginning.
So if somebody was on Suboxone and they got shot at fentanyl, what would happen?
Well, they may feel it, yeah. They, they may feel it, they probably will.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't act like if you weren't on Suboxone? Like if you weren't on Suboxone at all, what would it do?
They would feel it even more.
But why are they on methadone for years?
Because they're addicted to it.
Because they've got a dependency.
To methadone.
Yeah, that's why.
Well, no, because they have an opiate dependency. And that's the substance that they're using to treat their opiate dependence.
Is it a plan to come off of methadone?
Can I just, can I just carry on?
Of course.
Thank you. So anyway, that's about the methadone names. Unfortunately, because of its high potential for misuse and the dangers around non-tolerant people having access to methadone and overdosing on it, we have to be very, very careful with methadone. So it's all that we've had for years. It is a good medication, but it's a very risky medication to use, okay? And this has certainly led to the public perception it's a very dangerous drug. And we have to be very careful with it, for sure. But it also leaves the addict feeling like they've got liquid handcuffs. Fortunately, we now have another choice for opiate substitution therapy, and that is buprenorphine, which is under the trade name Suboxone. And it works in ways very, very similar to methadone. It's very long-lasting. It's a very high affinity for the opiate receptors, blocks the euphorogenic effect of the opiates, and controls the cravings. And it's just a much safer medication. So the risk of accidental overdose on Suboxone is relatively low. In fact, when there have been overdoses, overdose deaths, when people have been on Suboxone, there's always other sedating medications involved. Almost always benzodiazepine medications, which are tranquilizers, sedative medications. So buprenorphine, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't talk about, this is actually very, very well-established in the evidence as well. Methadone has been noted to reduce illicit drug use, improve health status, reduce transmission of HIV and Hep C. It decreases illegal activity and incarceration. It increases employment, reduces cost to society, and it decreases mortality. And that's been studied for years and years. In our days of evidence-based medications, that's one that'll hold up. Buprenorphine, safer, the relatively low risk of overdose. In some cases, it may be easier to taper. So when, when the goal is to come off of an opiate, it tends to be easier to do that. It's a more forgiving medication, methadone, in that it's much less potent. And the physician doesn't need a special license to prescribe it.
Is that what Canada's leaning towards more?
Because it is safer than methadone. Suboxone is now our first-line recommendation for opiate substitution therapy. It's important to know that some people still feel better and do better on methadone. And there will always be some on methadone. But it is our preference definitely to start people on Suboxone, absolutely give them a trial in Suboxone. It's actually very, starting Suboxone is tricky. That's the difficulty with it. And some people cannot tolerate the withdrawal that you have to go through to start Suboxone. But if you do not have withdrawal when you start it, the stuff can induce, can induce a withdrawal. And it can make it a very, very uncomfortable withdrawal. So when you've had that experience as an addict, you may not want to try it again.
So you have to be totally in full withdrawal, just three days or something, right? Three or four days?
Coming from methadone, it's a, it's a washout. Coming from heroin, maybe twelve to fourteen hours.
Okay, just, Eva, can I interrupt here just a sec? We're gonna do a whole question and answer thing after. And we're kind of behind schedule, so not to be...
Sorry, Maggie, I'm moving, I'm moving, I'm moving.
We're gonna let you finish because you did this really nice presentation.
Thank you, I really, I really did.
I can see you're passionate about it.
Anyway, I'm moving along here. So I want to say this too, though, although I really, really wish I could. So I want to say this too, though, although I really, really wish I could, I cannot cure this disease, any more than anyone else can. And it's very important for the loved ones of addicts to remember that. There was, have anyone seen the movie Clean and Silber?
Yeah.
You've seen the movie Clean and Silber? Michael Keaton, remember the line? Which keeps me humble all the time. The very end of it, you know, his girlfriend has gone off, and she's, she's, she's been using, she's crashed a car, and she's died, and he's thinking, I should have done something to have stopped this. And the line was, you're thinking you could have stopped her, you're thinking you could have saved her. You have to know that that's absolutely conceited, self-important and conceited. A guy who thinks he can control someone else's addiction has to know how overblown that thinking is. We cannot cure it. We can help, and we try, but we can only be as helpful as our patient or our loved one allows us to be. In addition, of course, to opiate substitution therapy, there are other forms of treatment, all very, very important, very, very important. Just a second. The peer support meetings, AA and NA. The sponsor, smart recovery meetings, online groups, and residential chat lines, residential treatment programs. Sometimes residential treatment programs are necessary, and Powell River has access to two supportive recovery beds for women and two supportive recovery beds for men over in the Comox Valley, there aren't any here. And I will say that very sadly, there's also now a support group for mothers and parents who've lost children in the course of this disease, and that is the Mother Stop the Harm. Although historically, abstinence-based twelve-step groups have excluded people who've used opiate replacement therapy, I'm pleased to say that in communities where this barrier has been dropped, there are better outcomes for long-term recovery. Another slide, I'm not gonna do that for you, I promise. It's a long one. So I just want to say basically that it starts here, and this is what we're doing today. It starts with conversation, with de-stigmatization, with education within the community, with understanding, with connection, and with support for the person with addiction. When one, don't just sit there. We know the disease never goes away, but it does become easier to live with as the years go by. And the longer abstinence is achieved, the easier it is to maintain that long-term abstinence. When one individual is treated effectively for opiate substitution ther, for opiate addiction, a ripple effect is seen. First, the addict starts recovery, and then the family can start to recover. And then the other relationships can be reestablished and established. So for every one person who's treated in addiction, there are many who share in the recovery. And that is the end. And I'm very sorry that I went over.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGuire. And next up, a little change of pace away from the medical, and we're gonna hear from our first responders out there that respond to overdoses. We have Rob Southcott, the crew chief for our ambulance service, and joining him will be Carrie Chard, Constable Carrie Chard from the RCMP, and our community police officer, so please welcome them. I meant to say too, Rob's also a fellow city councillor.
Yeah, which is a huge honor and a privilege. I, I'm originally from Powell River, and then I left, like a lot, a lot of kids after high school, and came back here eleven years ago so I could raise my, my son here. In that intervening time, I worked as a paramedic in downtown Vancouver for twelve years. So the question, Dr. Martiket brought up the question, you know, about what first responders are seeing. And that's a really easy question to answer, and that is that I'm not seeing anything differently than I saw in those years. During one of those years, there were somewhere towards five hundred narcotic deaths in, that was in the late nineties when I was working down there. So there were, we've seen crises before, but this one is definitely different than any of the others. Now, I just want to specifically say why I perceive that. I've learned a lot of what I've learned from working with the people who are involved in this, but also through my own life experience, and in that regard, both Dr. Martiket and Dr. McGuire spoke very much of the social side of this. When I was down there, the four-pillar approach was introduced. Enforcement, of course, is an approach that's been used traditionally, but a few other approaches were brought in. One was prevention, education, and treatment, I think that's the four. Those other three, pardon? Harm reduction. So basically, aside from enforcement, which is, which is social as well, all the others are social. And if I've learned anything, or it's led me to the belief that if there's any solution for this, and there is absolutely no cure, in fact, what fentanyl and all its multiple combinations are about is way, way worse than heroin because of all the strange mixtures, and also because the drug's so easy to produce, and because it is so lucrative for dealers, and because it's so hard to control in dosage. But the worst part of this for me is that is the social stigma. Now, it's worse here in Powell River than it was where I worked in the downtown east side, because there's a lot of social support down there. So users were far less stigmatized down there, they were far more likely to have a friend around, or someone who would be with them. And that's where all of us come in. And I, I'm looking around this room, I am betting that there are a number of us here who are in touch, or who have that kind of connection with people who probably are using. As both Dr. McGuire and Dr. Martiket stress, it's the, it's the disconnection between us that then leads to shame, guilt, I don't want to worry my, the, the people in my family, my friends, whoever it is, so I'm gonna just use. But the, the risks are so much greater now than they ever have been before. And unfortunately, what happens, and what I saw in previous years was, it's not the regular heroin users, I mean, these people have become used to, the people who use regularly and adapt, know the supply was a whole lot more reliable, and that's completely gone out the window. In fact, it's so much more lucrative now with the new drugs, they probably were never gonna see what might have been considered to be reliable heroin ever again. Gradually, that's where we're headed. So the specter is really, really nasty. And that is where my belief, after the many years that I have been watching all this, and it, it wasn't as bad of a problem here, I didn't see much IV drug use when I first came here, eleven, back here eleven years ago. So I, I started attending the E L Exchange Advisory Committee, just so I could find out what was really going on. I found out that this community, as is usually, as I've seen in many other ways, is very inclusive and very caring. So public health, Dr. McGuire, and various others were providing such excellent care that we didn't, paramedics, the ambulants did not see very much at all, but we are now. In fact, I saw three deaths last year, myself, personally, there are sixteen of us active on our crew. So I don't know whether I totally believe the figures, these are figures that are, you know, and public health doesn't want to worry us, but being worried possibly motivates us to doing what we individually can do, and that is putting our judgments aside, really looking at, at what our experience is with the people in our worlds who may be using, putting our judgments aside, and, and putting our connection with each other ahead of everything else. And that's all I really have to say about that, but I have one other thing to say. We do not load up a syringe with Narcan first. I've got a bunch of it in here. It's as easy as that, you draw it up and you administer it. We don't do that. And it's worried me how naloxone is promoted, it kind of smacks to me, to use a bad pun, of the magic pill that our society is always looking for. There is no magic pill for this. And while you're waiting that three and a quarter minutes, I used to average it out, three and a quarter is about how long it takes for an injection to stimulate, to reverse the narcotic attachment to the respiratory center in here, three and a quarter, or maybe a bit more, and we may know that brain cells start dying after five minutes without oxygen. So that's a pretty narrow margin, which really, really worries me. What we do first is we, we have an oxygen bottle, and we use this thing, I'm just gonna pass it around because it's really simple, and it's worth sixteen dollars, but if you don't have one of those, we can maybe do mouth-to-mouth respiration. I don't know, nobody wants to do that anymore, but if this is someone you love, maybe we might consider that. But I haven't heard that anywhere, really. It's naloxone, naloxone, naloxone. So maybe I'm saying something that's a little bit on the controversial side here, but we need oxygen, when somebody stops breathing, they need oxygen. And that's basically, Dr. McGuire?
I'd just like to say that when we distribute Narcan, it's here in the clinic. It's always attached to a little video presentation.
Yes.
And there's the save me, which involves certainly initial stimulation, and then artificial respiration, those are the things that you do after you call 911. We do target, emphasize that's a really important piece of it. You can do that, then you drop Narcan, then you get it.
Right. So this order, very, very important, but I'd really like us to think about that, because it is something you can do without a naloxone, it doesn't mean that you shouldn't get one if you want to. It's, you're, you're, you're putting that oxygen back in, the heart's still beating, it's still carrying the, the oxygen to, to the brain, very simple. This is a person you love, and they're not breathing.
Hello. So the most important message that I want to share with you folks, thank you all for your interest, and the most important message to get out to the vulnerable people coming from this uniform is that we really want people to call for help, to call 911. Like, some of the vulnerable people are probably apprehensive to call for help because they think, oh my gosh, I have drugs, they're gonna bust me for drugs, they're gonna bust my dealer, you know, everyone's gonna see me as, like, oh, the rat, I'm ratting, they're gonna think I ratted off my dealer because the police came. Now, more recently, when someone is calling 911 for a medical emergency, the paramedics are responding, and they're not required to have the police with them in certain situations. So it can be only a medical emergency in most cases. Now, police and paramedics and fire and rescue crews, obviously, we work together twenty-four seven around the clock. If they have a situation that is unsafe for themselves, for some reason, if there's potentially, you know, safety concern, violence involved, obviously, the police are gonna come to protect everyone who's involved, and if there needed to be an investigation, that's what we're there for as well. But we're first responders, we're on the front lines, we're going there to help people in the first instance. And then from there, we would, if there happens to be a situation where we can gain evidence, we can gather intelligence, we can gather evidence, and then we can move on to an enforcement kind of role. But our, our main role is the public safety, so that's what we're out there for in the first instance. Now, as far as the police are concerned, we have kind of two avenues where we work off of. We kind of work in a proactive environment in some cases, and I'll talk a bit about that for a couple minutes, and then we also work in a reactive environment. So just to put a little bit into perspective, here in Powell River, we're, you know, approximately a population of twenty, twenty thousand or so, and in our police office, we have approximately twenty to twenty-two officers. So just to put it into perspective, that's one officer for every thousand people, and that's, that's totally out of our control, that's what we have to work with. So some of our officers, we actually have three officers, one hundred percent dedicated to the drug enforcement in Powell River, and they're, they're going steady with any information that they receive. We really are trying to promote people to come forward and give us information, that can be done in a confidential manner, where, you know, we can protect their identity in situations, and we can just, you know, we have Crime Stoppers available, but they can come forward and give us information, and we can, we can use everything we have to build an investigation towards, you know, stopping the main, the main dealers, or, or what have you. Like, Dr. Martiket said, the fentanyl comes from China, so obviously, it's not, as far as I can tell, it's not coming directly from China to Powell River, so it's obviously traveling here from other avenues, you know, very low air. And also, as the doctor said, you know, it's so, it's so small, like, one grain of the substance, like the size of a grain of salt, is enough to kill someone, so that might be the size of a person who is unfortunately tolerant to the drug might be using. So that is a very small, minuscule item that the police are trying to detect or discover. Now, you know, coming in, the drugs are coming in like such small packaging, it just could be anywhere, and we do have to follow, you know, the laws of the land, and not just, you know, busting into people's houses and, you know, searching for drugs, we have to follow every, every rule that is laid out for us. So we're doing the best we can to gather all the information. We do have some stats available for the last year or so that we've been making some progress on, you know, tracking people down and having people to be held accountable for what we've been able to establish that they are responsible for, you know, whether they've been trafficking the drugs and selling them around town. So, so we are, that is our reactive portion. So as far as proactive goes, I'm a community office, community police officer, and I've been personally involved with the public health nurse from Mental Health and Addictions. We've gone to all of the schools in the community. As Dr. McGuire said, you know, it's starting sometimes when people are teenagers, something, something just happens to, to people, and they've, you know, progressed, things snowball into addiction. So we've been into every school, I've been into the high school, I've done a presentation to every single student in the high school this year, specifically regarding fentanyl and other drugs over the years. We've been to the Vancouver Island University campus in Powell River and presented to nearly all students there, we didn't get every single class yet. Been into the elementary schools, teaching general, general, good, healthy choices for the kids to have, and, you know, consequences and risks of their behavior. We had a health fair at the complex today for all the grade sevens, just constantly, every week, we were having some type of public education with the young people. So I know everybody's question is, what are the police doing about it? But we're actively, every day, trying to be proactive, and then we're also reacting to the calls coming in during the day. So, and then there'll probably be lots of questions, and hopefully we'll have lots of answers for you.
So we certainly appreciate our first responders, and we also have Trish over here, Trish Greenwood from the fire department, and they're out there every day looking after us, so thank you for what you guys do on a daily basis. Okay, moving along, next up, we've got... Okay, moving along, next up, we've got Nora Coros and her mental health team. She's with Mental Health and Addictions. And I'll quickly just read about each of her members. Kate Hodgson is an RN and coordinator for intensive case management. She has extensive experience in the field. Grady Singlinger has been a concurrent disorders counselor at Mental Health for the last 10 years. Ron Cameron is a concurrent disorders counselor and a social worker. He started the Smart Recovery Group that runs weekly at Mental Health. And that's something I actually don't know about, so I'd be interested in hearing about that. And Rachel Herenick is the Substance Youth Prevention Worker for youth. She works extensively in the schools and with youth who have been suspended due to substance abuse. She coordinates the PARTY program every year, which is Preventing Alcohol-Related Trauma in Youth. And I've been to one of those, but I understand they're very, very powerful for the kids. They are at an accident scene, they're taken through the hospital, the whole process, including the morgue. So it's a pretty powerful experience for them. So let's welcome Nora and her team up to say thank you.
It was bad that I made them come. And we forgot Kirsten Whitton.
Yeah.
She's our newest member of staff and she's another counselor.
Nobody can keep track of my jobs.
So yeah, so we've got Grady and Ron and Kirsten. And this is only a few of our, and Rachel is our, does the job. And Kate is our ICM, our new ICM team, which we've just developed. And got funding for just this year, just started in January. We, it's for looking for, after people in the community that have a moderate to severe substance use with or without a mental illness. So Kate's program is actually capturing a lot of people that generally didn't come into our mental health system or addictions services because they didn't keep appointments or, you know, they couldn't quite navigate that because they were, you know, as Dr. McGuire said, when you're really busy trying to feed your addiction and, and survive that way, you haven't got a lot of capacity to get into appointments and see physicians and keep a doctor and whatever. So we're very happy to have Kate here to do that. And Rachel with her youth programs. So possibly, Ron, you want to talk about the Smart Recovery, because that's another new program that we've got.
Okay. Sun's really bright over there. So Smart Recovery has actually been around about 30 years. It's simply an alternative to 12-step programs. It's, it's, in this case, it's a weekly meeting, we're gonna try to expand. So, and it can work alongside things like AA and NA. It's just a different approach. We use evidence-based therapy tools. And it's open to the public. They also have a, quite a vast online community. So people who don't have access to a face-to-face report, can't get there, if they go to the website, they have facilitated online meetings. So I trained to be a group facilitator. The online meetings always have a facilitator on the chat, so it's like a chat room. So that's great. People do shift work and things like that. Can almost always find a meeting online. Right now, it's Fridays from 2:30 to 4:00.
In our mental health group room, so if you get lost, just go to our receptionist and they will point you in the right direction.
You said that's what, Fridays?
Yeah.
Fridays, yeah.
Weren't you guys doing it here?
We were, but they got funding, so. We, we, we moved when, when they opened up on Fridays here. That was the only reason. And I'm actually hoping somewhere down the line, we can get a second meeting going that is a bit later. Maybe after CRC closes and maybe we can get this space again for the evening.
Yeah. So it doesn't have to, also, it doesn't have to be a professional that decides to take the Smart Training. It's 75 bucks. And so, you know, people in recovery could decide to take one and start a group as well and start expanding that service, that service. So.
What's the difference between NA and Smart?
So.
Some fundamental differences?
Well, yeah, just in, in approach. So there's no 12 steps or higher power. We, we don't have a problem with that. And lots of people who attend AA and NA come to our meetings too, just because you learn different skills and it's a different approach. So the more tools you have available to you, the better, right? So that, that's the primary difference. We have a handbook that we give people. And Smart stands for Self-Management and Recovery Training. So the idea is that you manage your recovery. And there are in-person meetings, online meetings, senior counselor, you know, all those things, you decide.
Meetings for family and friends online too. So, and again, you know, because it's a worldwide organization, sometimes if you're up in the middle of the night, you know, there might be one going on in England, so you can log into that.
Also, I think in, I'm hoping in June, I'll have a monthly meeting for families and friends of people with addictive behaviors. So in the same model. I'd love to do it weekly, but there's just not the time to do it. But I think it's an important piece. And I've run it by the people who are attending. And our attendance has been really good. We started in September. And most weeks now, we've got at least a dozen people. We've had as many as 16. And the, the atmosphere of the group has been great. So it's been pretty successful so far and pretty, you know, rewarding to be in there. So I, I just wanted to take a second to answer, you know, the question that you asked before. There's a little piece that, the, the reason why people who are on maintenance programs use again is the psychosocial piece, right? So, you know, if you had trauma, even still got trauma, even if you're not actively using, and you made black job skills, you made all the other things that all of us service providers in the community do. You gotta have all of that in place.
Knowing how to manage your emotions without becoming totally overwhelmed by them when they surge up.
So that's a big thing. Yeah, yeah. Oh, sure. Oh, that's a hand up.
Yeah.
When you said the meetings are at the hospital and there's about 14 doors to the hospital. And if you happen to do anything with community health, that's a no man's land or no woman's land. It's just impossible to find the right door. So which parking lot should you park in? And which door should you actually enter?
If you know how, the signs that lead to the Mental Health and Addictions Reception Desk are signs as when you come in.
Fourth floor?
Uh, third floor.
It's the third court. You can meet in the parking lot at the back on the third floor. Go straight down the hall, turn right. And before you get to the end, after you've turned right, on the left-hand side is the group room.
So the parking lot at the back?
Yes.
So, so either way, basically.
But you can come in through the main doors.
Yeah. On the third floor, if you're lost, just look up, there'll be signs pointing Mental Health and Addictions. One of our receptionists will tell you where it is. If you come in through the main doors on the front, as soon as you get out the elevator on the third floor, turn left and that's where Mental Health is. Right? So like, nice and simple.
You might be able to make an instructional film.
Yeah, exactly.
How to navigate community health. That's true, that's true.
So on the family and friends note too, this isn't a program that's offered by us, but it was a gap that we had noticed in terms of community service. So sometimes we'll get people calling saying, please help my loved one. And again, like Dr. McGuire was saying, you know, there's only so much that you can do as a loved one. So the Beeski Schizophrenia Society, we were hoping that they were gonna be starting some kind of support group for the loved ones who have family members who are struggling with addictions or mental illness, sometimes both. So if anybody's interested in that, then just contacting us as well and we'll give you their contact information to be put on a waiting list for that group. If it's needed.
So one thing I want to add on the prevention end, and thank you, Rob, for mentioning it, is pillars, right? And it's, excuse my voice today, I was at that health fair. And April will add. So in this, in this community, I think the prevent, it's really important to mention with the prevention end that I couldn't do that without the other partners that work with youth. Okay, so people that need to be mentioned, our youth clinic, right, is a really big one, right? Melanie, right, a really big one with our off-site programs and some of our other specialized programs. Working with the school district, Carrie with our CME. So some, there are some really key community members. Like all of the things that we do, the PARTY program would not run if it wasn't a, like a total piece of everybody putting in with that. So our prevention end is very, very collaborative, right? Because otherwise, there's, there's me, right, and for this whole community. So I could not do anything that I do, right, without those community partners. So I really need to mention that, that end on that pillar, because sometimes that pillar is the pillar that gets forgotten. So just to keep that piece in mind, okay?
Two more questions if I could. One of them is, one of the differences between any other program and NA and AA is the last days stands are anonymous. And I didn't hear anything about confidentiality.
Oh, it's like any other, confidentiality is the number one rule.
People agree to that? Like even, even a police officer could go to a meeting and not have it outed that he was there or she was there.
That's.
According to the tenants of those anonymous programs, right?
Well, wherever you go, attend a group. Anonymity is gonna be the number one rule at the top of your group rules. So it, your faith in your fellow humans is what that hinges on.
And so.
We can't guarantee it.
Yeah.
No group can.
So also, you know, if that's a big, big concern and, you know, that's a barrier to getting somebody there, again, online meetings, right? You can create an account online. There's, yeah, something to be said for attending in person, for sure.
That's the most anonymous.
I have a question about the new initiative programs. I, I, from what I gathered, I read in the paper and stuff like that, and what you had said was that they keep meetings? What else do you, how do people keep meetings? So you pick them up and take them, or?
Yeah, we do like ADL kind of things, like transportation, go to the GP, helping plan people's days, goal setting. We're client-focused, we look at what's important to the client, where they want to be. It's usually the first thing we do, sit down and say, hey, like where do you want to be every month? We do the harm reduction piece. So if abstinence isn't the option, then we look at how to reduce use or how the use fits into their life and how to meet those goals that are important to them. So it's really individual.
Sometimes it's, it's attending court with them.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's finding a place to live.
It's, yeah, it's the sort of work. And you, and obviously you, I know there's three of you, right?
There is, yeah.
And you guys go just wherever they need to, the courthouse, the.
Yeah, wherever.
The ministry.
What's ever happening to that person that day, yeah.
Is the Smart Recovery Program, is it more tolerant of like the methadone program than, than Dr. McGuire's saying NA is then?
Well, I can't speak to NA necessarily, but we're pretty tolerant and pretty open. Nobody says you have to be abstinent. Abstinence is the goal. But you don't have to be abstinent.
Being, being on methadone at NA, you're not considered clean. You can't collect, you can't get a bar or a egg.
Okay, can we kind of just wrap this up, because we're gonna do this discussion. I really want to hear all this input that you guys are itching to tell us. So thank you very much for your presentation.
There's all kinds of pamphlets and information over there on the table, so if you want something to take away with you, it's all there. I'm gonna kind of cue the people for the refreshments, because we're gonna have. Yeah, I'm, this, before we break, we have a couple, two really brave moms that want to come up and tell their personal story. So first of all, if I could call Darmana.
So I'd like to thank Maggie for doing this.
You're welcome.
And everyone who spoke today. My name is Darmana and I lost my son Sean to fentanyl here in Powell River on May 6, 2016. I'd like to start by saying I'm not a public speaker or an expert on drugs. And I don't blame anyone my son used with, only the drugs. So please, no judgment, because it's hard enough to come out and talk about it. Drug addiction does not discriminate. It can happen, it can happen in any family, rich or poor. Doesn't care if you're religious, straight A student, what ethnicity you're from, but one lapse in judgment can change the course of an entire life. When someone is suffering from addiction that affects everyone in the family, I'm hoping to help get rid of the stigma. I would like for people suffering from substance abuse and their families to reach out for help without fear. Shame, embarrassment, and fear kept us from talking about what was happening. Not just to our family, but my son is, not, not just to my family, but my son as well. I know he felt shame. No more shame. I also want Powell River to know that even though we're in a small, isolated town, we're not behind the times where, where drugs are concerned. Fentanyl is here, heroin is here, meth is here, it's all here. And we're not exempt. My husband and I, we had three children. Sean was the first born. I remember looking at his little face and being worried that one day he would have a car. Little did I know what was lurking in our future. Sean had a special spark. He was a happy and active child. But he always required so much more attention compared to his siblings. When Sean was 12, his dad and I split up. He went from having a mom who stayed home, taking care of the family, to a mom who's now working full-time, his father worked full-time, and his two best friends moved out of town at the same month. It was really hard on him. It, it was also at this time that I was thinking Sean was starting to use marijuana. And his brothers, his brother and sister adapted well to our split. When Sean was 16, a family member moved down the street, an uncle. His uncle had a history of substance abuse and Sean idolized his uncle. I found out he was spending time at Uncle's and it was at that time I wondered if he was getting into harder drugs. One night Sean didn't come home and I found out he was at Uncle's. And I went there and I beat the door and I brought my son home. So addiction can happen within families. When Sean was around 19, that's when I noticed he looked different. I had come home from work to a son with eyes like I'd never seen before. That's when our roller coaster ride really began. I knew, I knew nothing about opioids. And this is when I started finding pill casings around the house, Hydro morphicotin, morphine. I didn't understand. What I found out was that Sean and his friends were snorting the pills. Sean had, Sean knew people who had family members that had cancer. And he had a group of friends that they would all get together and buy, sell, and trade with each other. They can and do get pills right out of the family home. Doctor prescribed medication meant for someone else. In my day, it was the liquor cabinet, now it's also the medicine cabinet. My son came to me and let me know he was hooked on morphine. Addiction happened quickly. And that's when we put him on a weaning program with his doctor. And it was, it was hard. I was in charge of giving my son morphine at the correct dose, to slowly wean him off. Unfortunately, he would pester me for his dose early and want more than he was supposed to. I didn't give in, but he was finding what he needed elsewhere. So when we went back to his doctor, I told on him. And the book was closed and we were on our own again. That's when he went on his own to be put on methadone. He was 19, so I had no control, but I guess I never really did. I, it was, I really wanted him to go into treatment. Because of his age, it had to be his decision. And of course, he wouldn't go. Our experience with methadone, it's a great way to get off opioids considering it's taken correctly. And for a long time, my son was good, but eventually I was noticing him looking high again. And I wondered why my, my son was high even when he was on methadone. In my ignorance, I thought he, once he was on it, he couldn't get high anymore. So I would ask him what he was on and he would say nothing. I just had a beer. But I knew something wasn't right. My son also finally told me that methadone only blocks the opioids, so they can do other drugs. Drugs like benzodiazepines. Klonazepam became another drug that I would hate, any Pams. He would be chaotic when he used them and quite often end up in jail. It leads me to ask, why not just start with Suboxone? Our lives would never be the same. It became a life of doctors, counselors, police, and incarceration. I kept pushing for court-ordered treatment and with help from his lawyer, we got our court-ordered treatment. We searched for government-funded facilities. He was sent to one in Vancouver. It was right downtown. And he was so scared. He told me it was dirty and he could get drugs right outside the door. He caused a real fuss and we had him moved to the treatment center in Courtney. He was there for three weeks and he looked so good. I wanted him to stay longer as I feel they need a minimum of three months to make any difference. But it had to be his decision and he wanted out. So he was good for quite a while and it was really nice to have my son back. But eventually he fell back into drug use. And we would live a life of getting clean, relapsing, going to jail. I'd like to say that all three of my children were put through further education after graduating. His younger brother went to university and got an engineering degree. His baby sister is in the high-end hairdressing salon. And at 22 has just purchased her first home. And Sean was put through carpentry. He was so proud when he graduated. He got a job here in Powell River right away, but sadly, the drugs kept him from being all that he could be. On the night of Sean's passing. On the night of Sean's passing, I was told he went to Fred's apartment, where he went into the bathroom to use alone. And this is where his life ended, alone in the bathroom. And at 4:00 AM on that Friday morning, I got that knock on the door, the one I knew could happen anytime, I prayed that it wouldn't. And so to conclude, I'd like to share some of my concerns. If you use, don't use alone. Have a Narcan kit, know the signs of an overdose. We need detox, government funded treatment here in Powell River, here in Powell River. It's a natural rule, it's time to be treated as such. Addicts need to go to detox right away when they reach out for help, they can't get clean first. There needs to be safe housing for recovering addicts. Parents need to know, we need education and support. I had no idea what, what our family was in for, and I'm hoping that by sharing my story, I might even help just one family. We need education in schools, starting in elementary, focusing on prescription drugs and opioids. Doctors that are quick to prescribe opioids for pain, and over prescribing, it just leads to the selling of pills. I really feel we're over medicating. We need more accountability for dealers, and tougher sentences are needed. Fentanyl is a high, has a high potential to kill, and they know it. Thank you all for listening. I hope you get back together. Thank you.
And one more, and then we'll have refreshments. Maureen wanted to say a few words.
I have a speech, so I'm not. My son died also, just about two months ago, but I can't, I didn't do all these things that Darmana did. I actually, I'm a professional gardener, so I don't know anything about drugs or anything. And I didn't even know you were not supposed to use drugs alone. I actually thought you weren't supposed to use drugs, that's what I thought. And nobody told me that you weren't supposed to use alone. My son was actually in university, and I was very impatiently waiting for some essays to start coming my way to edit, and my son was working full time, so I didn't really think much of anything. So I guess my, for all the people that are really, that you, not you guys, you guys are all really smart, because you're here, but for anyone else who might be ignorant like me, they made these lovely cards, these women that all had their children die, they made these lovely cards with sort of dummy instructions, so if there's any other people out there that are, whatever, philosophers, gardeners, you know, writers, they might not know anything, these are good cards to give them. And I just wanted to say that I probably was in denial, because I am a single parent, and I've struggled really hard, and it's like the last thing I would ever imagine that would happen to our family would be a drug addiction, like, it just, like, we don't need it at all. Like, we need, we need somebody to work and make money, and my son knew that, and I think that's why he didn't tell us, and why we didn't clue in, so. So anyway, so there's these cards for any other people that are ignorant, and, yeah, I don't know what else to say.
Do you want to leave those over there so people can pick them up? That would be great. Thank you for that. Okay, Lynn Adamson had something to say?
Just really, really briefly, Amanda, come on up, please. We know that it's really confusing to navigate the system to try and figure out where to get help, and so I'm pleased to say that the Prep Society has just been able to hire Amanda Evans. She's on day two, so please be kind to her. But she's been hired through a grant to be a community convener for overdose prevention. And her job is going to be to help navigate the system, so that if you don't know where to go, you can go to your family doctor, of course you can go to Nora and her office, but if you're getting confused, or your neighbor's getting confused, tell them to come here. And Amanda's going to be working here, and her job is going to be to learn all of those referral sources, all of those options, and help people navigate where they need to go. So she'll be just working, we've got some awesome services in this community, and she'll just be working to help people figure out how to get there, and how to get everybody working a little closer together. So I wanted you to meet Amanda before you break. I also wanted to mention that Darmana was showing me when I first arrived, she's done a beautiful picture board over there of her son, and a couple of her son's friends who have also passed away, regrettably, of course. And so when you're having coffee and refreshments, I encourage you to take a look at those two. So thanks.
Those four people passed away here last year, 2016.
Thanks, Darmana. Thank you.
Okay. So, refreshments are available back in the back, Mark?
They're all bringing them out.
You're bringing them out? So we'll just take about a 10 minute, 15 minute little break, and then those who have questions. We have people back to their seats, please.
I'm going to allow you to.
Can you shoot off your gun, Rod? Oh, I guess not.
Like, I did drink some legs.
And for anybody who missed it, there actually is coffee over here. We could smell it, but we couldn't find it, so it's over here, it gets. Okay, so, question and answer. So if you, you don't have to say your name or anything, just raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and then you can, if you want to, just do a general question, or do somebody specific, fair enough, and I recognize Bobby.
Hi, Meg, thanks. I guess this is for Dr. Mark Kay, and I don't know, I don't know if it's more of a statement or if it's a question. I had to have surgery last year, it was a major surgery, and I'm in recovery, and they're giving me that amount. I'm like, hold on for a second. I said, how much are you giving me? Am I going to get addicted? And what the hell? I was really, nobody had pre-told me that they were going to do this, right? And now, you got to understand, I wasn't, I just came out of surgery, so I'm not all there anyhow. I'm not all there when I'm in any way. The thing is, the nurse explained to me, it's a minuscule amount, blah, 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 blah. I said, how do I know? I let them give it to me, and I felt it, and I won't lie, it was good. The thing is, though, I did not have the craving for it later, but what frightened me was, it was there, and even though it was given to me by doctors and nurses, nobody did a background on me. Nobody checked to see what my statement was. What's going to happen in the future, I wasn't 100% when they asked me, hey, guess what we're giving you? So, can anybody?
Maybe Dr. McGuire might be the person to respond to that.
Yeah, like, I. Absolutely, absolutely. It frightened me, took a pain, I took it, I felt it, it worked. And absolutely, yes. And it worked so quickly. Fentanyl is, fentanyl, you can go to the emergency room with a dislocated shoulder, and the doctors probably going to give you, fentanyl is something to bring back to you and be able to fix that shoulder from the field. It's a fabulous drug for acute, non-susceptive pain. It works well, it is pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical fentanyl's been around a long time, and it's a very effective drug.
So there's a statement effect right now?
Well, now, it's a very different drug, okay? This has been taken, made in clandestine love by the, you know, the Breaking Bad of the world, and they're up there and they're doing this stuff, and they're making all kinds of, you know, they're making it because of Dr. Mark Kay's, Marky's thing. That's it, Marky's thing. It's, it's not really hard to make, it's got an extremely high markup, you know, a little bit goes a long way, and it's easy to distribute. And it's not just in China, I'm sorry to say, it's all over Canada, and it's all over the States right now, it's not just there. People know what to do.
So, so in your professional opinion, somebody that has prescribed fentanyl, they should be fine?
And it has been prescribed, it has been prescribed, it's attached for quite some period of time, it's actually not being used in that way now, because it's been so potentially abused. But I want to get back to your point, it is such an important point, when people have an opuse disorder, honestly, the brain changes, the wiring changes within the brain, and there is very high risk of relapse down, you know, even when you come on leave. There's, the only thing that I can compare it to with the same addictive potential is nicotine. They continue to vary in areas similar addictive potential, people are always trying to quit, and they relapse quite, you know, frequently. People are always trying to quit, and they relapse quite, you know, frequently. Not all the time, but quite frequently they do. One of the biggest triggers to relapse, opiate use, is pain. And we're probably all going to experience it at some point in time. It's a very difficult thing, so whenever a person has an opiate use disorder, and they've chosen now to model of treatment, they have to have a plan with their doctor always. So, it will become, it actually does sadly, it falls onto the individual, to always express, I'm in recovery, opiate user. And so, the drug of choice should always be avoided. You know, if you were morphine addict, or a lot of that, that shouldn't be what you get. There has to be a plan for it all, J C, because you still have to have something for pain. But, you know, fentanyl, maybe you're going to stay on it. It's hard to know exactly what to use. They may just do something correct, but you have to know what's going to happen. You're going to have something for pain, because you need it, but you're going to get all of it very quickly. And in your circumstance, you probably had a long enough period of recovery, that it didn't hook you back again.
Thank God. But it never hooked in the first place, hold on. The thing is, I mean, my surgery was, they had to operate twice within a two-week period. And I was in the hospital for four days the first time, three days the second time. And we're talking major surgery.
Yeah.
And, again, they didn't, I didn't get to say, hey, wait a minute, they, I was given it. I smoked for years and years and years, I drank that. You know, and, and I am a very good social drinker. Prove it, that's not my...
That wasn't your drug choice?
It was, no. Like, the thing is, I just, I was so blown away how easy it was, and how little information happened.
So ethically, should you be asked by your doctor?
You would not be surprised if she got fentanyl for a procedure.
I was just, you know.
It's a good drug, mentally, but it's an effective drug.
Okay, all right, so, questions? Shirley?
Well, a big one for me is the reference to pediatric disease. And this is where it starts. And it doesn't start in high school. It starts in elementary. And we've got to get something into the elementary schools. And quickly, not just in Powell River, everywhere. And I'm wondering if you could take the message back, maybe? And potentially, there could be a nearest task force that was created to look at this. You know, and how to get that messaging out. I mean, we've got all kinds of, it looks like wonderful, you know, agencies, et cetera. Most of us don't know, I mean, there are acronyms going everywhere, most of us don't know what it means. Could there be a creation of a matrix? You know, like a directory of how all of this works, how it all fits together, so that, you know, people can start getting some confidence back into the system as well. Many people have no idea.
Yeah, that, that really concerns me too, and hence this meeting. Where do I go for help? And that's why we want to get the message out. So, for your specific thing, I would look to Nora's team.
So basically, like Rachel was saying, as the youth drug and alcohol prevention coordinator, it's her. So, the point that she was making was without her community partners, like our CMP, paramedics, the school district. You know, we really have to work together as a community, because there's only one full-time position for youth drug and alcohol prevention.
But the thing, what Shirley's saying is, it needs to be much younger group.
Yeah, she does.
I think what's important as well, though, is that there are other things that are happening in the, in the community. There's a lot more focus on, sorry, Margaret, I know she's in here with public health, because she was.
Yeah, like 30 seconds ago. She must be in the bathroom.
Because there's a whole bunch of programs that are going on, Success by Six, Building Blocks, those sorts of things that Rachel's involved in, of ensuring there's the health of our children. Not just the drug prevention and the education around that, which we do a lot of, but also the other nurturing things. That, you know, the statistics are showing that the success, that if you can successfully nurture a child to the age of six, and provide them with an enriched childhood in that time, that you are going to be preventing things later on. Not necessarily all addictions, or whatever. So that there are, I mean, I want to say that there are a lot of things going on in the community around that.
And in terms of a directory, dot F E T C H website, we just finished updating our services on there, so I can only speak for mental health. But, so there'll be mental health, substance use, elderly, I don't remember what the other...
And it's called F E T C H, I don't know what that stands for.
F E T C H.
F E T C H.
Division of Family Practices.
I guess what I'm going with this is, how do you inform the public that these are, these services are available? Do you have enough funding?
No.
Never, no.
How do you get the grant writing going? You know, this type of thing, like outside, I mean, it's, one of the work you're doing is wonderful, and it sounds great. You know, but how is it being shared out there, so that the community is aware? Parents are aware. Do you remember the HIV situation that happened in the early 80s? Whenever, you were a child then? When, when we all got pamphlets at home, parents did not talk about this. My pamphlet sat on the table for a week, at the dinner table, until finally we had the guts to ask the kids if they had actually read it. And then we opened up a conversation. We need to get to, we need to start opening up conversations. You know, by the time your kid's an addict, it's too late for most of them. How would we catch them before that?
And, and I don't think they're ever too young. I think back to when I was at Legal Aid, and we had a program with puppets, and it was about inappropriate touching. And we wanted to do it at kindergarten, a school, but, oh, no, we're not starting there. So, we went to preschool, and we had two disclosures at the very first presentation, that were followed up on. And, yeah, and they were preschool. So, I don't think you can start too early in doing that teaching, so good point. And maybe we can do it when we get our little group back together, and we'll rehash what's happened here, and Trish is kindly taking notes. And maybe meet with School District 47, and get some input from them. So, this is just the beginning, and that's exactly the kind of information I'm looking for, what can we do? So, thank you for that. Savannah?
I'm just thinking, all these different names that are going around, of different departments, I'm just wondering if there's one phone number, that could be the first phone number, that everybody can call, and then say, okay, this is the kind of problem I have. And then direct you to a child program, or adult, or addiction, or... Because it, it sounds like I wouldn't know where to call, having sat here.
Amanda. Call Amanda.
Yeah.
Put your name up, honey.
We'll start a new program, call Amanda.
Why, if she hasn't been here, I'll take the message.
Yeah, you might have to call Martin. Doesn't have the same ring to call Martin.
What I wish I could have done, when I, kind of thought my son was a little bit odd, is I should have called my doctor. That's what I, I think all your...
Yeah, yeah.
Is that going to hang down on your own thoughts?
What about the nurses hotline, 811? That's on parts that we got from the province. One side is 911, if he gets an overdose. And for recovery, 811 on the back for the nurses hotline.
Yeah, so there's a number of places you could call, but even if you called me at my office, I wouldn't just say, oh, I don't know. You know, I'd find some place for, where you need to go, so. Okay, did you have a question earlier, I wanted to get back to you, you okay? Did you get an answer?
Why, are they on methadone for years and years and years? I already have the answer.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't overlooked, that you did that kind of cut off, sorry. Okay, anyone else? Yep, right there. Ryan?
I've been in the pharmacy business over 45 years, so I've been exposed to a lot of things professionally and personally. And I think all, this discussion is incredibly important, especially with the kids. Because I, and I think, as Canadians, we better get a lot of this stuff in place. Because when we legalize marijuana, I fear for my grandchildren. Because that's, that's, I'm afraid, who's going to get... When I was at university in the 60s, there was marijuana everywhere. But it was about 3% THC. Today, it's 30 or higher. And I'm, I'm just so afraid, I've got four grandchildren, and I fear for them.
I hear you, I'm flinched because of that.
Our country is waltzing into this legalization, and we're, we don't have enough information. It just scares the hell out of me.
Thank you, I hear you. Savannah?
I just wanted to say that he used to be my methadone doctor. I was a drug addict for 18 years, and I've been clean nine years, I don't, didn't have to live.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? I'll get you next, Trish. Yep, sorry, I don't know your name.
Oh, Lorraine.
Lorraine.
And my son is 46, and he struggled with addiction for over 30 years, and he had the last 10 years, cleaning was over, but... And it's amazing, you know, like, he got a house, he got a job, he got everything. And then Christmas was some stuff going on with the family, Christmas is a bad time anyway, he was on the island. And he went out to use heroin, and he overdosed, somebody knew or can't him. Thank God, he went to the hospital, but scared enough, he drove himself. And it's, you have to be vigilant all the time. Nobody's sure or fixed, ever. And he says he has to constantly, ever since he got clean, any doctor, any dentist, he has to ram it into them, and check, what are you...
What are you giving me?
Because I can't, I can't, I can't. And so, you have to watch it all the time.
Thank you for hearing.
His partner too, she's got almost 20 years.
Wow.
But it's been a scary little time. But thank God, he's still here.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate that. Trish?
I was just reading this week in one of the newspapers about a good Samaritan law. So I just wanted to ask the RC, they were talking about, I don't know if it's passed, or if it's something that's coming up, a good Samaritan law, for people who call 911 when they're, they have possession, they have drugs on them, that they would not be charged? If they have them on them, and they're calling to aid somebody else, is that, is that something?
Yeah, it's introduced into Parliament, and it's going to be, if you're part of this investigation, and you're found in possession, simple possession of drugs, then you won't be charged. We certainly be a mechanism for us to charge you. Not for the dealers, though. All bets are off for the dealers, just, let's get that message out there. But it's the people who are calling on behalf of their friends, they're scared to call us. They're scared to call ambulance, because lots of times, police show up as well. So, please call, you're not going to get charged.
Does that mean you want search for a drug, or?
Each case, case by case. I'm not going to say that you won't lose your drugs, but you're not going to face a criminal charge.
Well, that's good, you know, I think that'd be encouraging for people. I can see, you know, young kids going, I can't call the cops, they're going to arrest me.
Exactly.
So, does it have to pass for, for the name of months or weeks, or, you know?
Parliament.
Okay, question over here.
Yeah, I just want to express the availability of more beds being available for addicts. You know, the, I think there's, what, two for women, or whatever? This room speaks to how bad we needed the beds, and the availability, and the detox here in town. Try and get an addict from Powell River, and see if they're going to go. It's not going to happen, very rarely.
Do I have that addict waiting for 30 days in order to get alive?
From the ferry to Courtney.
Yeah, you usually change your mind by the time you get to Courtney, too.
Yeah, it's not good, and I totally agree with that. And Nora's worked hard on it, and she did actually put out a request to get some treatment beds here, and she didn't get any responses. So, we're going to try and take another look at that, and see what we can do. But when somebody says, I want to go into treatment, they need to go right now. It's not like, okay, well, how about this time next week? It just isn't going to work. So, certainly, that's a good point, and it's something that the provincial government needs to be lobbying for. Healthcare, when and where you need it, and we need that in Powell River.
And each community, every community.
Every community should have.
Hard problems out to another community.
Exactly, like we do our garbage. Roger?
Maggie, I just want to mention that on the lower thirds, it says Amanda's name and phone number for help call. So if you could just say that in words, it's written right here in the view, for help call Amanda. If you have, if you need help, you can call Amanda, and she'll help direct you through the process, if whatever it is you need help with your drugs, you guys just talked about that a minute ago.
Yes, so that...
Her number is now on the lower third.
Okay.
So, you know how they say it, queue shopping? They say, only treat that with more beds left.
Okay, so here's Amanda's card, so for help, oh, it's pretty small French.
It's written right here. It's written right here on the screen.
She needs to be able to say it, Roger. Say it.
For help, call Amanda. But I can't read them. Phew, I read it. For help, call Amanda. Okay, any other questions? Suggestions, input? Shirley?
Could the hospital foundation help with this?
Hospital foundation?
Or not foundation, I don't know what you call it. Yeah, auxiliary. Hospital auxiliary fundraising.
Yeah, they're not the hospital auxiliary anymore, they get mad when you say that.
Hospital auxiliary?
You know, the hospital auxiliary does not fund any wages or...
No, 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 there's, the money goes into some sort of a foundation, I don't know what they...
There is a hospital foundation.
Yeah, okay. And I believe that they collect the money from the auxiliary, et cetera, and it goes into a pot. What they do with it after that, I have no idea.
People submit a request for monies for certain things, like, they need a van, or whatever, and then it goes to a boat.
Right.
And they don't do core funding.
Could they, could they, they don't do core funding? So that they could not get involved in, you know, some detox beds, or stuff like this?
Well, I think we have the funding, maybe we're close to helping, thought the funding for two detox beds.
For females, though, was it not?
Well, it was two beds, wasn't it, Nora?
Two beds, two female beds?
No, two beds.
Oh, so it, specifically, it was for females?
No, it was two beds for the community.
Okay.
And we were unable to provide beds in this community. So, we have a contract now with Alice's House in Courtney, as well as CBRC in Courtney. Again, you still have to get over to Courtney. The, now, in, in, I mean, I will, I will say that, as difficult as it is to get somebody from here to Courtney on the ferry, it's way easier than trying to get them down to Vancouver. And the reality is, is that, before that, there was no way that somebody could get from Powell River to detox, without being in horrendous detox. So, you know, the services are very much lacking here, absolutely.
Yeah, and it's something we have to work on.
But the infrastructure of trying to put together a detox program, or detox center, and fund it, and, and staff it, is prohibitively expensive as well.
Is it about the same price for every community as here? I mean, although it's prohibitively expensive, whether it's in Courtney, or wherever, it's going to be the same price for, to have, maintain that service here, as it is in another community. I mean, we're an isolated community. We need, we're desperate for those services.
Absolutely.
So, I just can't see...
And I think it's really important to lobby for that.
We need publicly funded facilities in each community, and that's what I mean. It's for profit, and, right, you know, I don't have any problem with somebody making money, but for a lot of people, they simply can't afford to go to the, some of the treatment centers that are available. So, we need something that is publicly funded, and I think that's a provincial responsibility, not our local government. They've downloaded enough on us that it has to stop.
But could the city write, could the city write to the province and say, look? And so you're on record, and the public can get you, right?
Yep, we certainly could, and that's one of my goals, is to let the province know I have several avenues to get there.
I know.
Anna Maria?
I think that this is really about upstream thinking. As was mentioned, we have to be looking at treatment. So much money right now is going into really poor in our reduction, with state injection sites and things like that. It's almost like, they're so far down the water, we're just trying to keep going over the waterfall, and I am that, but we miss the boat up here. We have to start looking at, and I'm going to use the term treatment in all of its capacities, because the DCCU has just started up, the D C Center for Substance Use, the D C S U has just started up. And the recommendation is opiate substitution therapy. It is against detox, and let me know this, you say that's the number one recommendation is not to detox opiates, unless they can go directly into supportive recovery.
Exactly, yeah.
When you look at the numbers and the volume, there's so many. There's so many opiate use disorders, it's huge. Now, I have 150 patients in recovery.
But we can't be overwhelmed by the numbers.
We have a lot of those patients, but in order to provide supportive recovery for all of that, that's huge. That cost is huge.
Well, let's get started, and we are started, and we just keep, keep expanding it.
But also don't forget that, you know, they'll often use some oxal or something in the bridge to get there. And that keeps them safe.
Absolutely.
And that's extremely important.
And the other part to it is... And the other part to it is, we have, at this point, we have a vacancy rate of less than 1%. There is no housing in this community for anybody to come back from treatment to. There is absolutely nothing. And any kind of supported housing after treatment doesn't exist.
So June 27th, come to my affordable housing group. The Elm Room at the complex.
I'm going to put in my little plug too, because I think that that's such an important point. When they come back from recovery, the big cloud is there. And they're all ready to be an obstinate. And there's so little to maintain that as they come here. And I think you need an early recovery program at Monday to Friday. Like it's an educational session, supportive cable, so that there's structure in their day, outreach based. The law seems to do very well with that situation. So I think it's something that we really need to start looking at.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Can I just ask, detox beds by themselves aren't really going to answer anything, right? So if you had two detox beds here, unless you have treatment for a fall off, that's okay.
Yeah, both hand in hand, yeah.
Yeah. And so you just get somebody detoxed and then we just, okay, now I'm going, what do I do now?
Yeah, present.
I'm also a recovering addict and, and that's what I found. I'm a, my drug of choice was heroin for many years. And I work, I'm a patient at Dr. McGuire's. And they, when you do go to detox, you're detoxed for five to seven days, depending on your amount when you go in there. But after seven days, if there's no follow-up, you're right back to nothing. And usually before you're on the ferry coming home, you're using already.
Yeah, you need that transfer over. Exactly.
It's true. If somebody's been in recovery for 30 days and comes out and there's nothing. Yeah, but the follow-up too, like even just outpatient treatment, even from the recovery, the women's recovery house here, even if they did a daily outpatient treatment, at least it's something, right?
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Can I just thank Martin for doing this too?
If you want to thank me, eat these brownies. You don't want to see this get worse. Have a cookie, all right?
Yeah, so there's still food left.
Anytime.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I'm really overwhelmed by the participation. And we'll do some follow-up stuff. We'll get our little group back together and we'll go over the notes and we'll figure out what our next steps are. I have no idea, but we will keep working on it. Would you have one more thing, Shirley?
And then maybe in the fall?
Possibly, yeah. I think that's a good idea. You, you can't stop getting together because then it falls apart. So that's probably what we'll do is to keep things on this, down this road and accomplish what we can. And just, we were just talking about the crosswalk on, on Willington, across from Cutters to a park. Eight years to get the crosswalk, dealing with provincial government. So I tell you, it's not easy. You really need to be persistent.
It could change.
It could change and that would be nice. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.